Today is Wednesday, June 9th, and I would like to call this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order. The time is 6:30 PM. We are going to say the pledge, but today we are going to be joined by Nate Lyons, who's going to lead us today. Come on up, Nate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Cusimano?
Here.
Trustee Lucido?
Here.
Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Treasurer Gillette?
Here.
Clerk Posey here. Supervisor Viviano?
Here.
All members are present.
Moving on to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? There is a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Moving on to approval of the bills. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
Support. Is there a discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to amend to remove Van Overbroek, Mashad, and Timoney for separate treatment invoices number 10684 in the amount of $3,532, and invoice number 1093 in the amount of $317.90. The question I have is whether or not this work was done on behalf of pension funds, and whether or not those sums should be due and owing from the pension funds monies rather than from the township general operating funds.
You want to refer to Stacy?
Stacy, can you?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. They are coming out of the pension funds and not the general operating funds.
Oh, so...
But the bill run reflects...
So on the last page...
The bill run reflects the matter of what fund it comes out of. The bill run reflects all bills being paid.
Correct. On the last page, right about in the middle, fire retirement fund, 384990. That should total those two invoices.
I had some trouble with my printer, so I'll just take your word for it. I withdraw the motion to amend.
Thank you, Mr. Cusimano. Any more discussion on approval of the bills? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the bill run. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Approval of previous meeting minutes from May 26, 2021, and a closed session meeting minutes from May 26, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, point of privilege, I haven't had an opportunity to review the minutes. I'd ask that the clerk bring them with her.
I can go get them, and we can table this.
I cannot in good conscience vote for approval of minutes I have not reviewed. So I would...
I just want to, if I may, Mr. Chairman...
I think I reviewed them.
You reviewed them after the meeting?
I reviewed them at the end of the last meeting.
Yes, I just wanted to refresh your memory on that.
I withdraw the point of privilege.
Okay. Any more discussion? We have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the previous meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Moving on to public comment. We now invite members of the audience, and those of you at home who are participating remotely. If you'd like to make a comment, if you are participating remotely, please digitally raise your hand, and you'll be called on. Those of you in attendance, please approach the microphone to the right of the room. And remember, this is on agenda items only, and there's a three-minute time limit. No one present seems to wish to talk. Mr. Ivanowski, do you see anybody on our Zoom meeting that wishes to comment?
Yes, sir. John Machowski. Sorry if I did not pronounce that right. I wanted to speak. John Machowski?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I was reading through the agenda, and I'm hoping that this is on your form. But one of the things, I have talked to you, and I've sent all of you an email recently in the last few days concerning the progress on the 24 and Foss Road Park. And I guess right now is that what I'm really addressing is the pickleball facilities, or lack of pickleball facilities in the Macomb Township community for outdoor play. And one of the things, we've talked about this, as I mentioned, we talked about this in '18, we've talked about this in '19, and we are now in '21. And we were promised that we would have the parks, or the, I should say, the courts available, and they're nowhere to be seen. So it's one of the things that, as I see Shelby Township, even though they put up courts, they were poorly put up, Rochester Hills are putting up courts by the end of this fall. We have so many other communities that are embracing this new sport, and I just want to make sure that Macomb Township does have the proper facilities to continue to attract and keep our current residents, because pickleball is not just for our elderly citizens, but also for all citizens, as now it is becoming a professional sport with the people who are playing it, our 20- to 30-year-olds. So to attract the younger base, I just want to make sure that this is still on the forefront of our parks recreation theme. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Just as a reminder to anyone who is listening, that the first comment period is for non, I'm sorry, for agenda items only. Non-agenda items, we have a second comment period. Anyone else? Bob?
Yes, sir.
All right, seeing that there's no more comment, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Is there a motion? Should I move the agenda in its entirety?
Second ordered.
Any discussion on the consent items? Hearing none. There's a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to adopt the consent agenda items in their entirety. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item seven. We have an Eagle Scout recognition tonight. Clerk Posey, can you give us some information, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Honorable board members, tonight before us, we have a resolution honoring Nathaniel Nate Lyons. Nate is being recognized for earning the prestigious Eagle Scout ranking. Nate has graduated on June 6, 2021, summa cum laude, from Dakota High School, and he earned his Eagle Scout rank on March 11, 2021. He will have his Eagle Scout Court of Honor this summer, and we are requesting that the day of his Court of Honor, July 14, be named for him. To earn his Eagle Scout rank, Nate built an outdoor classroom for Mohawk Elementary School from the fundraising phase to completion. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Township of Macomb, speaking on behalf of all Macomb Township citizens as follows. The Macomb Township Board of Trustees recognized his many successes and publicly extends its congratulations to Nate Lyons on his elevation to Eagle Scout, and further extends its best wishes in his future endeavors.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution honoring Nate Lyons and declare Wednesday, July 14, 2021, as Nathaniel Lyons Day in Macomb Township.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Is there a second? Support.
Go ahead.
Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this resolution? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to adopt the resolution honoring Nate Lyons and declare Wednesday, July 14, 2021, as Nathaniel Lyons Day here in Macomb Township. All in favor? I'm sorry. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Cusimano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Congratulations.
From now on, I want a stepstool out there next to all Eagle Scouts. All right, moving on to item eight. Tonight, we have a public hearing for our fiscal budget for the year, fiscal year 2021, 2022. Ms. Smith, would you please give us your presentation, please?
Sure. Good evening, Board. I just want to let you know that there was an updated version since our last public hearing. This is version four. It does have a cover page that addresses all of the changes from version three to version four. The first two are actually changes in estimates for this current fiscal year that we're in, and then the next five regarding legal fees, and then a couple in other functions, and then fire pension are for next fiscal year. I did have some questions that came to me this morning that, if the chair doesn't mind, I'd like to address?
Please.
Now, okay. So one, well, I'll read through the questions and then give the answers to the best of my ability. Why is there no increase to resident or builder application or permit fees? The building permit application fees and building permits were down this current fiscal year because of a slowdown in construction due to COVID-19-related issues, and the projection for next year does fall in line with what we did in the 2020 fiscal year. It is, one of those line items is a little bit lower, which was just to be a little bit conservative and cautious. I did talk with Joe Maples, the building official. He said he was a little more cautious in some of the revenues, because at the time we were working on this, he wasn't sure how much construction would pick up. How many liquor licenses are available or allowable? Class C, there are 53 allowable, 17 issued, and 36 available. SDD, hard liquor, 27 allowable, 25 issued, and zero available. Two are pending. SDM, which is beer and wine, 80 allowed, 33 issued, and 44 available. What is the legal basis for the 15% delinquent water and sewer penalty? This is more of a board policy question, I think, rather than a budget question, so I defer that to the Board of Trustees. Is audited 701,000 interest income wrong? Why is it projected to drop down to 200 in this upcoming budget? The audit amount in 2020 is correct. It was 701,000 in the general fund, but the market in general has significantly declined as far as investment interest that we're earning. I actually talked to the deputy treasurer today, and he's hoping that we make that $200,000 mark. Audit and accounting, should it be 69,000 instead of what? I don't have the number that was in the budget, but the line item that the trustee was referring to was only in the general fund portion of that expense. The parking wreck, water and sewer, fire operating, fire pension, and retiree healthcare all share in this cost, and each fund has its own line item for audited expense. General fund only accounts for about 50% of audit costs. What is document imaging, and why is it seven times increased from the previous year? This was pre-approved projects that were approved in 2013, 14, and 16, and it's a scanning of paper documents to create electronic copies. The budgeted amounts have been carried over from previous years because the projects could not get accomplished due to manpower shortages, running the election, and some increases in the scope of the projects over the last few years. So it's anticipated that we can hopefully get this done in an upcoming year. Contract services under the IT Department, 101-228-817.000, is this for the BPI contract? Yes, and it's... When does the contract expire? It expires this December. There is a provision in there, if the board so chooses, to have an additional two-year extension, but that would have to come to the board for approval first. How is computer equipment allocated among departments? Detailed projections and rationale. The IT department maintains a schedule of computer equipment for each department as well as an end-of-life schedule. Each department during the budget process estimates what they think their computer equipment, what they'll need in the upcoming year. They also use the aid of those IT schedules to help them forecast that. There was a 50% decrease in the computer equipment line item in the assessing department from the previous year, and that was because, in the previous year, it was, or in the current year that we're in now, it was budgeted for them to get a copier, but we were actually able to get that copier using CARES Act money, so it didn't come out of their budget, and they decreased it this year just for, I believe, their computer expenses. Sidewalk repair is at $0 for the upcoming year and the current year. What changed? And then in fiscal year ending 2020, $486,000 was spent. Was it not budgeted for, or was there no budget amendment? Yes, the sidewalk repair line item should be zero, as the sidewalk repair program has been discontinued. The $486,000 in the previous year actually was budgeted for, but that number doesn't show in our current budget, just the actuals for the previous year. The only budget numbers you'll see are the year that we're in, and then the upcoming year. So there was $500,000 budgeted last year for that project. Miscellaneous expense in facilities and grounds and line item, give some examples. That's usually for just smaller items that don't really fit into any other category within that department, for things such as gloves, safety glasses, safety vests, ratchet straps, screwdrivers. Next question. What is the basis for the $110,000 over the next two months for legal fees? The estimate, the 110 estimate is for expenses incurred from May till June. So far, the actuals for May till today total almost $67,000, so that leaves us about $43,000 more for the month of June, and some of these bills, I think, we're still owing for April, April and May on one, and May and June on one of the others. So that estimate actually might be a little low. OPEB breakdown by expense subcategory, $450,000 actual for 2021. Why is there a 6% decrease, down to $421,000? This amount is actually based on actuarial study that's done every year on our retiree healthcare fund or our other post-employment benefits. The actuarial recommends the amounts to contribute each year to stay fully funded in our retiree healthcare, and it was reduced from the previous year because we were over 100% funded, so they factored that into our future contributions. So that's why that one's lower this year. And then, is the $200,000 for contingencies unrestricted? Yes. That can be used for anything within the general fund that may come up during the year that we didn't budget for. And with that, I opened up to any other questions or comments? Anyone may have.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. At this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Mr. Ivanowski, please, if there's anybody from home who wishes to comment during this public hearing, please raise your hand digitally. You'll be called on. Anybody in the gallery, again, please make your way to the podium on the right side of the room. I will now open the public hearing, and the time is 6:48 PM. No one wishes to speak here. Bob, is there anybody online who wishes to comment?
I cannot see anybody, sir.
Okay, seeing that there is no one wishing to speak, I will now close the public hearing, and the time is 6:49 PM. Thank you, Stacy. Moving on to item nine. We have the unfinished business from last week. The Michigan Township Association Legal Defense Fund invoice of $211.26. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk has provided some information in the board packets that explains what that amount is spent on, and justification, and why it's a good idea to spend it. Okay. Hearing no discussion. There's a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Clerk Posey, I almost marked that wrong, to pay the $211.26 for the legal defense fund. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. All right, moving on to item 10. We have a request to promote water and sewer employee.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board members. I'm here to recommend two promotions in the water and sewer department. The Board of Trustees has approved a request to initiate the recruitment process for two lead utility worker positions to fill vacancies that occurred during attrition. These positions are posted in compliance with the MATEC/CEBA agreement. These were two internal applicants for these positions. These two candidates were discussed with the water and sewer superintendent, and we are recommending employee 1391 and employee 1658. Both of these employees meet the requirements for the positions, and both have over eight years of experience in the department. Thank you for your consideration of this matter. If approved, the promotions will go into effect June 10, 2021, and this is a budgeted position.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. There's a motion on the floor from Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to promote water and sewer employees number 1391 and 1658. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item 11, is a request to initiate the recruitment process for the position of firefighter. Mr. Tabaka?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
I'm sorry. Let me cut you off. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support. I'll get this right, yeah. Okay, now, Mr. Tabaka.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board members. I'm here to request that the HR department can start to initiate the recruitment process for the position of firefighter. This position will be posted in compliance with the IAAF/CEBA agreement. The position being requested is a replacement for an employee who has been off work going on two years due to an injury. This vacancy has caused an abundance of overtime for the fire department. Therefore, the chief would like to fill the position to ensure that manpower levels are adequate and to reduce the amount of overtime. So thank you for the consideration. If approved, this will start immediately, the recruiting, and this is a budgeted position.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion from Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to initiate the recruitment process for the position of firefighter. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 12. We have a rezoning request. Agricultural to residential one-family urban located on the east side of Hayes Road, one-quarter mile south of 25 Mile Road, permanent parcel ID number 08-07-100-014, 08-07-300-011, and 08-07-300-013. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Mr. Box? Oh, no, he's not here today, is he?
Melissa's on.
Melissa, are you available?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board members. Yes, my name is Melissa Callenacy. I'm the planning review analyst for the planning department, and since Director Box is on vacation, I'm presenting in his place tonight. The rezoning requested this evening is for three parcels. They're located on the east side of Hayes Road, just a quarter mile south of 25 Mile Road within Section 7. They comprise altogether about 37 acres in total, and are currently zoned as agricultural. The applicant is requesting rezoning to R1. The rezoning request is consistent with the master plan, as it shows the property is zoned for residential at three units per acre. All relevant township departments have provided their review, and they do support the request. Additionally, the planning commission has voted unanimously to recommend zoning, rezoning approval as well. Tonight, we are asking that you do approve the rezoning request, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions or comment from the board?
I do have one question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Are there any plans that are submitted for this area yet, or is it just in the rezoning phase to just get it to where they can start drawing up some plans?
Currently, it's just the rezoning request. There are no development plans that have come through to the township.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Hearing no more discussion. We have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the rezoning request from agricultural to residential one-family urban for permanent parcel ID numbers 08-07-100-014, 0807-300-001, and 08-07-300-013. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item 13, is revised final site plan for Macomb Town Center South, located on the north side of 24 Mile Road, east of Romeo Plank, permanent parcel ID number 08-09-301-039. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Support.
Melissa, could you give us some background?
Sure, thanks. Macomb Town Center South is located in Section 9 of the township, on the north side of 24 Mile between Foss Road and Romeo Plank. The development is already largely constructed, but one of the multifamily sections that's known as the park at Town Center South is now ready for completion, but the builder has decided to make a few modifications. The modifications are for an overall reduction in the total number of units, so several buildings have been reduced from 10 to eight units, and others from eight to six units. These changes have also resulted in footprint reductions. Internal departments have reviewed and provided their support of the proposed change, and the Town Center Committee has also voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the revision as well. Tonight, we are asking for approval of the revised site plan for the Macomb Town Center South, and again, I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion from the board? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the revised final site plan for parcel ID number 08-09-301-039. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item 14. Is a request for authorization to purchase a scissor lift and an air tow trailer, and to sell surplus lift and trailer. Total purchase price, I believe, for the two items is $41,736. Is there a motion?
Support or most moved?
Support.
Getting ahead of yourself there, Treasurer Gillette. Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Good evening, Board members. I am requesting authorization to purchase a Genie GS 3232 scissor lift from McAllister Rentals, and an air tow ground-loading trailer from National Ladder and Scaffold. The total price for both would be $41,736, which is currently budgeted in the 2021 fiscal year budget for equipment purchases. Purchasing for the lift was received from Turex through Sourcewell, and the purchasing, or the pricing for the trailer was from an invitation to bid, number 21-015, which National Ladder and Scaffold Incorporated was the lowest bidder. The current single-man lift is approximately 15 years old and no longer services our needs. This new scissor lift has the ability to allow multiple workers to utilize it at the same height, or at the same time, allow easier access through the doors, and a safer working height. This lift will be used throughout all township buildings. With the approval of this purchase, I'm also seeking authorization to sell our current lift and the equipment trailer. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Jason. Would you mind explaining the advantages of the trailer that you wish to purchase?
The trailer allows... The trailer allows the lift to be loaded on the ground as well as other equipment that we have. It lowers on the ground and then it, with airbags and hydraulic, so it'll lift the trailer, or it'll lift the piece of equipment up. So it's a little safer as far as loading the trailer with different pieces of equipment.
And your intention is to use it for not just that trailer, not just the scissor lift, but for many pieces of equipment?
Correct. It'll fit all of our pieces of equipment.
Any more discussion?
I have one question, Mr. Chairman. The scissor lift that we had, is that a typical life expectancy, 15 years for this one as well, or?
The scissor lift still is in working, the current one is still in working condition. It's just what we're doing with it now is not necessarily, I believe, what it was bought for
Okay.
that long ago. Um, as far as the life expectancy, yeah, there's nothing that would say that it wouldn't be 15 years plus.
And do you have any idea on the value that you might be able to get for selling the one we do have?
Because of the age, I can't, I don't really know.
All right. No problem. Thank you.
I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
To, just to follow up on that old machine. Is there any way we could have traded it in on this so we don't have to be responsible for selling something like that? That's kind of a unique piece of machinery to sell because of its ability to be dangerous. Goes in the air, you hit stuff. Is, was, was there any negotiations where they could have just took it in on trade and discounted this new one?
There wasn't, but I can def, I can look into that. I don't know as far as purchasing.
Well, with my experience with, with anything that either digs or lifts high in the air, you always have, you always run the chance of when a private person sells it to another private person, you always, you always have that liability problem. So, but if that dealer sells it, then we're out of it. We just trade it in and it's done. So.
I can definitely look into that. I know that they do sell used equipment. Um, I did not ask them, uh, but I can. I don't see why they wouldn't.
Okay. And was, like, how many times a year do we use this thing?
Uh, it's quite a few times. Um, the, the scissor lift I'm proposing would be used even more than our current single-man lift. Throughout all of the buildings, the different work that we've been asked to do, this, the lifts come in handy. This, um, like, number of times it's, for instance, we.
I guess what I'm getting at, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be, would it be cheaper for us to lease it when we needed it? Or is this the better way to go?
Because of the years, I don't think it would be cheaper to lease it, or to, uh, to rent it because of how long they last.
Yeah.
You know, it is a large purchase in the beginning, but I think over the next 15 years, the amount that we're going to be using it, I think it'll pay off versus renting it at a, I think it's right around $700, $800 for a week.
Okay. I got one last question. Again, safety. This thing goes 33 feet in the air, windy day. There's all kinds of things that could happen to this, to these things. Can we go back to McAllister and ask them or find out if they got any one-day, two-day, three-day training? So our, our workers that are on it have been pre-trained before they start using that.
We actually, all the work, all of the, um, full-time employees in my department are certified on the lifts. We did that training about two years ago.
Okay. Good. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Oliver. Any more questions or discussion? All right. Hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to authorize the purchase of the scissor lift and the air tow trailer and to sell the surplus lift and trailer. Uh, total acquisition cost, $41,736. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item 15 is a request to award the fire alarm suppression and extinguisher inspection and maintenance contract in the amount of $3,740. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board members. I'm here tonight requesting authorization to award the contract for fire alarm, fire suppression system, and fire extinguisher inspection and maintenance to Shambo and Sons LP in the amount of $3,740 per year for three years with two one-year options. This will cover all township-owned building, uh, all township-owned buildings. This contract would also include their normally, normal hourly rate of $130, $133 per hour for maintenance or repairs, not covered by the inspections, or not covered in the inspections. Emergency calls after hours would be $199.50 per hour, and the weekends and holiday rate would be $266 per hour. This bid was placed un-mitten with four bids submitted, prices ranging from $3,732 to $6,700, $6,376 per year, with Shambo and Sons LP being the lowest qualified bidder. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from the Board? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Lucido, to award the fire alarm suppression, extinguisher inspection, and maintenance contract in the amount of $3,740. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
All right. Moving on to item 16. Uh, we have a request to award the professional auditing services, three-year contract. I believe it's to Plant Moran, um, in the amount of $208,500. Is there a motion? So moved?
Support.
Ms. Smith?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Board. Um, I'm before you today to ask, um, or, I'm, I'm sorry. We, we had a request for proposal for auditing services placed un-mitten in April with a due date in May. There were 175 notices sent, 25 plan takers, and six proposals that were submitted to Macomb Township. The evaluation team consisted of the deputy treasurer, the purchasing specialist, and myself. We independently scored and reviewed all of the proposals. We, uh, chose to invite the three top scoring vendors in for interviews. Once the interviews were completed, the, uh, recommendation was to award the contract to Plant Moran for three years with two additional one-year, uh, contracts that would go back to the Board after the third year. Plant Moran was selected based on their strength of their overall proposal as they are one of the largest certified public accounting management consulting firms in the nation and have a staff of over 3,300 in 25 offices worldwide. They have a dedicated government team of more than 275 partners and professional staffing, serving 1,800 public sector clients and 500 governmental clients. Local townships that they currently are engaged with include Shelby Township, Washington Township, Clinton Township, and Chesterfield Township. I am asking for a motion to award the professional auditing services, three-year contract totaling $208,500 with two one-year renewal options. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. How does this compare to the last contract we had with Plant Moran?
Uh, it is about $19,250 cheaper per year than in previous years.
Perfect. Any more questions or discussion from the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question. Did they explain why it, there's less of a cost to the township between previous contracts and this contract?
They wanted to keep our business. I, I think because it was bid out, they bid at a lower amount than in previous years.
Thank you for that. Um, Mr. Chairman, I noticed that Raymond Robeson LLC, um, submitted a bid that is $9,000 less per year. Uh, other than the establishment by Plant Moran of being large in the field, is there any reason why the lowest qualified bidder would not have received? Any other reasons why the lowest qualified bidder such as Raymond Robeson would not have received the, um, the recommendation?
Yes, uh, they were interviewed as well. Actually, they're, over the five years, they're actually, Plant Moran's only about 6,200 more per year, but they spend 250 more hours a year auditing our books and going through everything. Plant Moran had the lowest hourly rates if we did need to go out for any specialized services above the scope of the normal audit. Plant Moran audits 575, single audits annually totaling about nine billion in federal awards. This is the first time in a long time we are going to need probably for the next four to five years a single audit done on all of these COVID-related grants that we'll, we are receiving. Whereas Raymond audits only about 110 single, single audits totaling about 811 million. Plant Moran fees go up in the, from this year to next year, zero percent. The year after that, it's two percent, then three and a half, and then two, two and a half percent. Raymond's fees go up four percent every year. So even though initially it does look like they're cheaper, they do, uh, raise their percentage or their costs more per year. So as I said before, their average is only about 6,200 more per year over the five years for Plant Moran when you calculate it all out.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add some personal knowledge. As I indicated when I sat on the other side of the dais, the Macomb County College had bid out for the first time in many, many years, which the current vendor was Plant Moran and substituted, um, Raymond Firm. I have noticed absolutely zero difference in the audit. There's been no marked or tangible way that I can discern that the audit process or the audit report has been changed at all. I think that, um, fiscal conservatism requires that the lowest qualified bidder, receive, receive the, uh, the recommendation, not the established one who's now seeing religion, which, but I will say this, I think that any savings to the township is a benefit. But as my father used to always tell me in the produce business, you go with leaders, not followers. Plant Moran, because of their size, should be able to offer efficiencies and economies of scale that would dictate that they provide services to the township for a lesser rate. For that reason, I'm opposed to this, uh, recommendation, and we'll be voting no. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly, Mr. Kuzmano. Uh, you are certainly welcome to vote your conscience on any, this and any other vote. Uh, however, there's a reason we put these out as requests for proposals and not requests for bids. Uh, when it comes to things like professional services, there are an untold number of intangibles. In particular, uh, knowledge and experience of the staff that we're going to be dealing with, their expertise on how they do their job, all of which you cannot necessarily boil down to a specific value. We've had lowest-priced professional services here in the not-too-distant fut, in the past, and it did not work out so well for us. So I would prefer, uh, to stick with very skilled and knowledgeable professionals. I think ultimately, they will al, always prove to be the best value. That's my personal position.
Mr. Chairman? I would like to, uh, point out the, uh, going out to bid for this particular, um, service. Uh, first off, is going to save us money no matter what we end up doing, thankfully. Second, there's been an additional cost to going out to bid, and that is, uh, the deputy for the Treasurers Department spent an awful lot of time, invested in interviewing the various firms and working with Stacy and with Janet, our purchasing specialist, and, uh, took that process exceptionally seriously. Uh, and, um, I believe that, uh, that team, uh, are, and the fact that this board went out to bid are one of the reasons why we're going to have reduced auditing costs now. But I also would like, not to put words in the deputy treasurer's mouth, but he, uh, values, um, uh, lowering risks at a certain amount of value in his determination, and tries to evaluate potential risks of any particular financial, uh, aspect of what, what township does. And, uh, it was his interpretation that, uh, that Plant Moran offered a very, very low-risk situation to the township, and that combined with the lower price, he felt was the best value. So I, I certainly, uh, can see bo, uh, many sides of the situation. I to, I totally understand it. Uh, and I don't doubt that if we went with a different firm, maybe we'd be fine. You know, and there's a good chance we'd be fine. But maybe we wouldn't, whereas, you know, going with a firm that's been auditing, knows our systems, knows our computer systems, knows our processes, uh, and so forth, offers a little bit lower risk, and we are saving $20,000 a year from what we've been paying in the past. So I think it's a win-win situation. We're just debating how much we win.
Mr. Chairman, one final comment. Any monies for professional services should not be compared to be the gross mismanagement of past, but sound business principles and management in the present. The money that's being spent for these professional services in excess of a lower qualified bidder or submitter of a proposal, rather, does not pave a road, does not repair a sidewalk, does not help open, uh, parks. For those reasons, I think that there's an allocation of resources going on in a, which is, you know, reasonable minds can differ. But I'm opposed to, uh, and I'm price-driven in its, in awarding and, and voting for professional services. I think that they should, Plant Moran should be stepping forward and matching the lowest bidder rather than being, coming in higher. By a significant percentage, I might add, six percent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my remarks.
Any more discussion?
One question. How many year contract is this?
Three.
Three.
With options for renewal?
Three, with an option to renew. For two years.
Thanks.
Trustee Lucido?
I had a question to clarify, um, something you said earlier about the, the amount of hours that they use. So in, what I'm seeing here in the breakdown, Raymond Robson, uh, is estimating 402 hours versus Plant Moran, 650. So for this, I don't know if it's a small amount, but six percent different, we're getting 250 more hours of auditing time. Now, that can go two ways. Can we go back to Plant Moran and say, you know, why is this overestimation of 250 extra hours? What if you were at 400 hours? What would your price be then? Or are we getting a more value because we're getting 250 extra hours of auditing time for, in my opinion, a smaller amount? When I look at the hourly rates, Plant Moran is by far the cheapest per hour. So you can't look at the overall price all the time. Sometimes you've got to break it down to how many hours you're getting, how many hours we actually need. We may not need that many hours, I don't know. But when I actually break it down per hour, Plant Moran is actually the cheapest. So. It's just my thoughts.
Thank you, trustee Lucido.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I would be curious, trustee Kuzmano, uh, you had indicated Raymond. You didn't notice any change in their, in the services that they provided for the audit? You didn't notice any change in the audit itself? Does, does your, have you had an opportunity to ask your finance director if they feel the same way? Because I know my experience with Plant Moran and Stacy's is two totally different experiences because she works for like three weeks side by side with them. So I'm just curious if your finance director has noticed a change with the new vendor versus Plant Moran?
It's the vice president of Business Administration. I've had significant contact, as you might imagine, because of my critical criticisms of all contracts, whether it's at the college or at the township here. And there, there's been no complaints or no significant changes that have been brought to my attention.
Okay.
The experience is, you know, one of the aspects I'd like to just pick up where trustee Lucido left off. There's a significant difference between the number of hours projected. As our operation prepares its books and submits materials to the auditing firm, which there's a note in the front of all these audits saying that they rely on managed, bad managements, numbers that are given, uh, it, it makes their, the job of the auditor so much easier because they don't have to go through and rectify or reconcile discrepancies. And I assume with Stacy's capable hands on the, uh, books and our department heads and the supervisor's office and the clerk's office, working in tandem with each other in a, in an efficient manner, that it's, that there's not going to be any issues that require tremendous amounts of time. And that's the way it is at the college.
Okay.
We give them a clean set of books and they perform an audit and generate the audit report.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
If I can, I would just like to add that I had my concerns with Plant Moran in the first four years of my first term because we never put it out for proposal. My question was always, can we do better? Can we get a better rate? Are they offering the same quality of service that others have? I was happy to see that we finally got it out for proposal this year. I know that, I have faith in Stacy. I know the amount of hours that she puts into the audit, and she works side by side with Plant Moran for several weeks. And I trust in your decision or recommendation. You've had the opportunity to review other firms. I know you had the same concerns that I had in the last four years. So I appreciate your time in this and all the time you spend on our auditing process.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one more comment. And this is in order to the benefit of Plant Moran. Plant Moran is a very large firm. It's soup to nuts. They'll do anything. As a matter of fact, they once presented the water increase for the Board of Trustees under a previous administration. So you have that benefit. But I'm always torn between cuts to other aspects of expenditures, which many residents feel are very important and have contacted the members of the board about. And I'm always trying to drive the hardest bargain for the township. So I want to thank everyone involved in this process, and I think it's been a good discussion. But to reiterate, Plant Moran does offer quite a bit of services which are not available with other firms. But that's at an if-come basis. And I don't think that it was anticipated, and maybe Stacy can... What other services would be projected or anticipated to be used by Plant Moran?
I don't know of any currently. In the past, we've had them do five-year projection studies on the different funds. We've used some of their services actually a couple of years ago to help write and evaluate the IT consultants' proposals.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cusmano. Anything else? Okay, hearing no more discussion, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to award the professional auditing services three-year contract in the amount of $208,500 to Plant Moran. All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item 17, is a request to approve the budget reallocations to the general fund for the fiscal year 2020-2021. Is there a motion?
Go move. Support.
Stacy?
As you stated, this is a request to approve the budget reallocations to the general fund only for the current fiscal year. I did want to point out this is a budget reallocation and not an amendment, so the bottom line in the budgeted expenses and revenues does net to zero. On page two, there was an increase proposed in the Supervisors Department of $32,185, and that's because of a move of the confidential assistant position from the human resources to the Supervisors Office. On page four, it's requested to increase the election section by $75,933. This is due to increased staffing costs related to the 2020 election. However, I did want to point out that even though the expenses were increased, we did receive about $114,400 in grant revenues to help offset those expenses. They just don't show in that line or in that section. Page five, to buildings and grounds, is a decrease of $454,838. That amount is what's offsetting these other increases in the other sections. And that reduction is due to some capital improvement plans that never occurred in the fiscal year. Page five is legal fees increased $185,080. That's because originally when this was budgeted, we had it for the interim legal counsel, and now we've moved to mid-year to an outside legal counsel. Page seven is, under other functions, increased $161,640. Expended approximately $186,000 in COVID-related items. And same as the elections, we also received grant money to cover those, but the expenses were increased due to those. If you have any other suggestions or comments how we can reallocate, I welcome them. But I'm asking for a motion to approve what I've suggested and answer any questions.
Thank you, Stacy. Any discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the budget reallocations to the general fund for fiscal year 2020-2021. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item 18, we have a request to set the 2021 millage rates.
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to make a motion to set the Township General Operating Millage Rate at .6314 mils, which is a reduction based on the Headley Amendment from the .6461 mils in the current budget cycle.
Is there a support? Is there a discussion?
One quick question, Mr. Gillette. You said there's a reduction?
It's a reduction based on, required reduction based on the Headley Amendment. So we're required to roll back based on the growth of our township revenues.
So in dollar amount?
The actual dollar amount will be expected to bring in more. But we're just limited in how much more we can bring in to a rate of inflation established by the state, sort of a rate of inflation, a calculation they use. So if we're anticipating bringing in more than that rate established by the state, we have to roll back our millage so that it doesn't exceed that rate. So we're going to bring in more money, but we're going to roll back the millage that growth, additional funds are from growth in, both in the value of property but also the expansion of our tax base with new additions and so forth.
It mainly tied to Headley?
It's entirely tied to Headley.
Entirely Headley.
It's entirely Headley.
And this is the amount that Stacy used to calculate next year's budget?
Good. Thank you.
Any more questions on the general operating budget millage? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucito, to adopt the general operating millage rate for 2021 at .6134, correct?
Yep. 6314.
6314, .6314. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I could do roll call. Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucito?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
I'd like to make a motion that we establish the fire operating millage at a rate of 1.9 mils, which is a decrease from the current 2.0 mils, representing a 5% decrease. And if that's supported, I'll speak to it.
Support.
Thank you. This reduction of 5% in the fire operating millage will not impact our ability to provide fire services to our community. We have looked at the five-year plan that's been put forward by the department with regard to capital services, capital needs, and the cost of the new buildings and expected personnel. So we are able to roll back that millage rate slightly and not affect any reduction in our fire providing services in the township.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Is there any other questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucito, to adopt the fire operating millage, or the millage rate for the fire operating budget for 2021 in the amount of 1.9 mils. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucito?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Treasurer Gillette?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion that we establish the fire pension millage rate at 0.09%, which is a reduction from the current .1009% of 10%. And if that is supported, I'd like to speak to that motion.
Percent or mils?
Mils, I'm sorry. It's a 10% reduction.
.09 mils.
Yep, .09 mils. Thank you.
Do you have a second?
Yep, may I speak to it? The fire pension millage fund is exceptionally healthy right now. We have more than adequate funds based on the projections done to cover the cost of that pension, to the point where we are now able to actually reduce the tax rate that we assess for that fund and still be very, very, very safe within the guidelines established for those funds.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Any other questions or comments? The one thing I will note on the fire pension, we are at nearly 100% funded now?
We are well over 100% funded.
So this is, even at this projected, or at this...
Except there are not.
That's the retiree healthcare fund.
Well, I guess if you look at, why don't we let Stacy answer the question?
Last year, we were about 85% funded, but there's also an actuarial study done every year on that plan. And based on what the actuarial says, we should contribute so that we get to 100% in the next few years. She suggests that we, or I'm sorry, it worked out to be about $360,000 in revenues that we need to collect this year in taxes. So because of the increase in the taxable value, we were able to decrease the millage rate to the residents.
What's the current millage rate, Stacy?
The current millage rate is 1.009.
1.009, good. So the point I was trying to make was simply that even at this level, as a decrease, we're still going to be very, very well funded for our pension fund.
When I say that we are 100% funded, we are 100% funded for our immediate needs for quite some time. Currently, we pay about $150,000 a year in pension benefits. This is a relatively small pension retirement fund, and we have over $360,000 and $1,000 in cash in the fund and over $2.2 million in investments. So by that perspective, we're very well funded moving forward. From the long-term, you know, projections, even with that, we are still well within our guidelines for full funding.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Any other discussion on this motion? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to adopt the millage for the fire pension fund at .09 mils. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucito?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. Motion carries. Treasurer Gillette?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we establish the police protection millage at 1.5 mils, which represents a 3% reduction from the existing 1.55 mils. And if it's supported, I'll speak to it.
Support.
Thank you. Once again, we are in a fortunate position of good, healthy growth in development in McComb Township. And based on what the tax has been bringing in the last few years and what it's projected to bring in, we can roll back the tax rate slightly, 3%, and still completely and fully fund the anticipated police needs of the township, the current and anticipated police needs of the township. We've been building surpluses in that fund as we had with the fire department fund. Even with this tax reduction, we'll still be building a surplus and we're covering our yearly needs within the budget. So we're not defunding the police, anybody. We're just simply reducing the tax slightly and still fully funding the department.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucito, to set the 2021 millage rate for the police protection fund at 1.5 mils. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucito?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Do we have one more?
We do. I would like to make the motion that we establish the Parks and Recreation Millage for the upcoming year at 0.7693 mils, which is a reduction from the .7871 mils. This reduction is exclusively based on the required Headley reduction. So it's not a, it's simply the Headley reduction is required by law.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Can you repeat the mils?
Yep. We would establish the Parks and Recreation Millage rate for the upcoming year at 0.7693.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion or questions on this millage?
I had a question on the Parks and Rec side of it. If we have a need for additional parks, how can, I mean, with the Headley, are we basically saying we're overfunded like we were, or too funded? Or bringing in too much money, even though we can spend it very easily on parks?
So the law and the Headley Amendment says that when we have a millage rate, let's say it's 1%, when voters approve one mil. And growth in the community goes up substantially beyond the rate of inflation growth that the state essentially allows us to collect an increase. We have to roll back the rate so what we actually collect only goes up by the rate of inflation.
Understood.
So we are required to roll this back so that we are increasing spending, but only at the rate of inflation. I will note, however, that in the, there's one more year, I believe, in our current 10-year approved millage rate for the Parks and Rec. So at some point, we'll be having to decide whether or not to put that on the ballot for renewal and at what level.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question for our expert Treasurer Gillette. Isn't it true that if we wanted to, we could pass a resolution and put it on the ballot to increase the spending if it was approved by the voters?
It's absolutely true that we could put this on the ballot to increase spending, correct? So we could put on the ballot to increase it back to a full mil, to double it to two mils, anything we wanted to put on the ballot. And if voters approved it, then it would reestablish that as a new baseline for the Headley Amendment. And it would slowly roll back from there slightly, assuming growth continued in the township.
And what's your feeling for why we, if there was a need for more spending, why we're not voting to put it on the ballot?
I think you're getting into the area of policy and personal opinion, but I think we do have, this millage will expire next year.
It would have to go on the ballot next year.
Either we have those Parks and Rec millages at that point, or we vote to put something on the ballot next year.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
Does it answer it? Okay.
It's all about policy and what allocation of resources.
Right.
Headley restricts us, so we have to go to the voters if we want to. Locality, local municipal government has to go to the voters to approve any increase in spending.
That's right. So if we want to, we will ask the voters in the next election cycle whether or not they, you know, the questions that we ought to ask them, do you want to increase it? Do you want to keep it the same? Do you want to decrease it? Whatever it might be. We'll have to have a discussion about that and make a decision in the future. But right now, what we're doing is essentially just renewing the existing rate with the required Headley reduction factored in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cusmano. Any further questions? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to establish the Parks Millage at .7693 mils. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, we'll call vote. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucito?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
I would just like to comment on the fact that the three full-time elected officials along with Stacy, we sat and analyzed all these millage rates and calculated so many different... so many different, um, numbers and means to ensure that the services still were provided. There would be no change to services provided, but yet we have found some opportunities to reduce taxes to the residents. Um, that's, this is the first time in my four years that this much time was spent on millage rates in addition to budgeting. So again, I just would like to thank my colleagues for taking the time and working with Stacy and myself, um, through this budgeting process and spending the time on these things to find these types of opportunities.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sure.
I would, uh, like to echo the clerk, the clerk's comments that, um, at least I, I, the sense that, uh, I got while working with the full-time elected officials, the department heads and so forth, is how can we provide the best value to our residents in Macomb Township? You know, what, how can we provide them services, uh, and yet burden them with the lowest taxes we can while providing them the highest quality? So it's a balancing act to provide those services and to keep our rate low. Uh, and I'm, I'm very proud that we are able to, uh, to accomplish, um, you know, not a giant, uh, tax reduction. Ultimately, when you factor out the headly reductions in and the reductions that we voted on, in addition to the head of reductions, it's about a 4 percent reduction in township taxes. And, uh, I think a lot of residents are all too, of many communities, are often expect every year that they're going to be asked to pay more and pay more and pay more. So it's a little bit unusual when a community asks the residents to pay a little less. And works as hard as this board does to make sure that we're delivering more and find a way to deliver the high-quality services. And, uh, it couldn't be done without, uh, some amazingly, uh, efficient department heads in this township, amazingly efficient employees, uh, and sort of a great, I think, spirit in Macomb Township of, uh, of providing great value. So I'm, I'm very proud of, uh, what we're doing today, both budgetarily-wise and with, uh, millage rates. And I think an awful lot of credit needs to be spread around to some great folks that work for Macomb Township.
Thank you, Treasurer Drollet. Um, if I can ask, you and I both have looked at our surrounding communities and their overall tax burden. You've looked at it closer than I have. Uh, how do we stack up with communities around us and communities our size?
We are the lowest tax rate in Macomb County of any community approaching our size. We are a lower tax rate than Chesterfield Township. Overall, that tax is including-
Half our size.
Which is half our size. We're a lower tax rate than Shelby Township.
Which is smaller.
We're a much lower tax rate than Clinton Township, which is a, uh, a little larger. The only communities are lower taxes than Macomb Township in Macomb County are some communities in the very northern, uh, areas that don't offer some of the services. They might not have even a police department or-
We're approaching numbers and population that would put us, uh, at top 10 or close to top 10 in population in the state, yet we, we have managed to hold and now reduce our tax rate, uh, lower than most communities' half or less than half our size. I think that's pretty astounding. It's a, it's a nice legacy that previous boards have left us, and I'm glad we've been able to, uh, uh, advance that cause. So, good job.
Good job, too. Not just the people here, but the people who preceded us, uh, who, uh, set, you know, who, who essentially set us on, you know, pretty firm fa- uh, foundations economically, that we are able to not have huge legacy costs and that we are benefiting from some of those decisions that were made, in some cases, decades ago.
Okay.
Quick question. Just on a average Macomb Township house, that, that 4 percent converts into what dollars?
An average Macomb Town- it, it, did you answer?
I know, it's not huge.
Yeah, it's not like 25 bucks?
That's still $25 in the residents' pocket.
Right. And, and I think what, what we hear from those who, uh, propose tax increases, it's only going to cost you a little bit more, and therefore it's worth doing. Uh, and that's the argument that's often made. In this case, we're saying it's only going to cost you a little bit less.
Less, that's right.
And I, I prefer to be telling people it's going to cost a little less than telling them it's going to cost a little more every year.
Yes, that's good news. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item 19, we have the request to adopt the General Appropriations Act for the fiscal year 2021, 2022. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Uh, Stacy?
Good evening again. Um, this is a request to adopt the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Um, so essentially, this is a resolution adopting the budget, uh, based on the last version that we just discussed earlier in the meeting. With that, I ask for a motion to approve the General Appropriations Act as presented.
Thank you.
Late, we already have the motion.
Yep. Oh.
You got that part. Um, all right, is there any questions or discussion at this time?
Sure, I have a comment.
Sure.
And that is, uh-
Throw it in there, go ahead.
Sure. While I'm making speeches. But this, uh, is a budget I think that we in the township should be all very proud of.
Oh, I don't know.
Uh, this is a budget that, going into it, I remember, uh, you know, Supervisor, Supervisor Viviano saying, "I don't want my first year, uh, as a supervisor here resulting in deficit spending." And so a priority was that we were going to only spend what we take in and that, uh, we were going to review every line of the budget and have to make sometimes difficult decisions to not do some project that we think would benefit the community. But the decision was, uh, unfortunately, in the past few years, there had been, uh, a number of budget passes that went into the fund balance, the rainy day fund, so to speak. In other words, we were spending more than we were taking in. And if we continued at that rate and at the same pace of doing it, we would have no rainy day fund in five years. So the decision was made that we need to stop going into the rainy day fund. We need to stop spending more than was being taken in. And, uh, we need to establish, um, a new discipline in the budget. And, uh, with, again, the help of every department head, uh, who worked hard at meeting with us and providing with us their budget needs in the next five years for their capital projects, and with their being honest about what maybe we can get by with and can't get by with and so forth, and the work of Stacy, uh, our finance director, who, uh, is one of the most amazing finance folks I've ever encountered in many years of different levels of government, because of her incredible grasp and hard work and, uh, uh-
And patience.
And absolute patience, who's, you know, a tremendous asset, uh, to this township. And the work with our, my colleagues on the board, we're able to present to this community a budget that fully funds priori, our top, our absolute necessities, able to make progress on the road needs. Sure, we would like to do more on some of those road needs. There is things we would like to do more, but we're not going into a deficit. Uh, and we are creatively looking for ways to add additional, um, value to our community through being much more aggressive in looking at grants and applying for grants and finding ways that we can add additional services and, uh, and, and road projects, uh, as we move forward. But we're not doing it by going into deficit. And I'm, I'm exceptionally proud of everybody who's involved in working on this budget. I think it's a, I think it's a great work. So I want to thank everybody that was involved, the township, in every way.
Thank you, Treasurer Drollet. Anyone else? Well, I'm gonna follow up, try and follow up Treasurer Drollet's comments. Um, this was my first, uh, budget cycle to preside over. Um, what I was, uh, one of the things I learned is that the previous budget reviews had been done sort of in a vacuum, meaning that the other full times didn't necessarily weigh in. Uh, it's really never how I intended to conduct myself in office or, uh, and nor did I, do I think it's a good idea. So, uh, the three of us actually sat in every budget meeting together. We did review line by line, much to the surprise of many of our department heads. I appreciate all of their cooperation as we reviewed everything and their patience. We discussed some things that might have seemed like minutia to some people who may have been listening, listening in. But every little dollar, every little, uh, decision to spend or, uh, how we were going to account for revenue, all of it mattered. And we started with, Stacy, remind me, what was our deficit when we started? What was it, 5 million?
A little over 5 million.
Uh, I think it was 5, it was 5 million, yeah.
It was around $5 million in potential deficit spending. That was based on a wish list, of course, of a lot of different projects and a lot of different things. Um, but we slowly, I chiseled away and in some, some instances took a big axe, but, uh, we still provided every service that our residents expect of us. Uh, we still have plans to attack, uh, every capital improvement. We're just doing so in the most financially and fiscally responsible way that we possibly can. Uh, there is money out there. We are learning more and more about it every day, about grants and, uh, how we can improve our revenue levels without ta- increasing any taxes. And the three of us are going to continue to press those fronts and get as much, uh, resources directed back to our community as possible. So, um, I'm very encouraged by what we went through. Uh, I think the staff here understands, uh, their roles and is, is fiscally responsible as we are, and they're going to be helping us along this year. And I hope that when we get to the end of this budget cycle, uh, we're going to be in a better position than we were when we came into it. Uh, one last question, Stacy, I'm going to put you on the spot. Well, our fund balance has decreased significantly in the last two budget cycles. Do you know approximately how much?
Oh, about 10 million.
About 10 million?
It's 10 million.
So coming into this office, uh, we had, we had spent 10 million more than we had taken in in the previous two years. That is, that is astounding. And in some cases, I understood the spending, in some cases, I didn't. One thing I will never do is I'm never going to spend money just for the sake of spending money. Uh, it's not how I'm built, and I don't think anyone on this board is built that way. We're always going to attack, we may not always agree on what the best value is, but I think we're always committed to getting the township the best value in services, in capital improvements, uh, everything across the board. So, that's all I have to say. I'd go longer, but my time is at 8:30, so it won't matter. All right. So if there's no more discussion, uh, we have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Drollet, to adopt the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Is this a roll call?
Mm-hmm.
Clerk Posey, we please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Drollet?
Yes.
Trustee Cusamano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviano.
Yes. Motion carries. Good job, everybody. All right, we are now at, uh, public comment for non-agenda items. Much like the agenda items, uh, earlier, if you have something to say, you can approach the microphone on the right. Uh, please state your name and address for the record. For those of you who are listening at home, um, and participating remotely, please digitally raise your hand, and Mr. Ivanowski will call on you at the appropriate time. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Jim Jelius, uh, resident and, uh, former deputy clerk. Uh, I tried to email, I have a letter for each of you. I tried to email it. It didn't work. I don't know if it's the township system or mine, but, uh, anyway, I'd like to read the letter into the record, if I may. Uh, "Tonight, I'm respect-" excuse me, respectfully requesting your reconsideration for the naming of the proposed new park at 24 Mile and Foss. I believe that honor should go to someone that actually served our community with honesty and integrity. That person being former township clerk, Michael D. Kays. I am asking you to consider renaming, excuse me, the Whitney Park to the Michael D. Kays Veterans Memorial Park. Mr. Kays faithfully served the township for 20 years, six as deputy clerk, then 14 as the clerk, starting in 1996. He served with distinction, honesty, honor, and integrity. Once he discovered the graft and corruption occurring in the final three years of his life with some prior board members, he tried to warn them that it was occurring. But his efforts were met with harassment, denials, and attacks on his character. They called him a liar and stated he was playing politics. History has now proven that he was correct all along. Despite some of the official duties, such as the planning department and the FOIA function, being removed from his office in retaliation, spearheaded by Boochian Dunn, he continued to gather evidence of the graft and corruption and presented to the FBI. This information directly led to some of the criminal indictments and convictions that have occurred so far. He did this despite being gravely ill with the cancer-causing parasite he received while serving his country in Vietnam. He fought against this corruption because he wanted an honest board, free of any corruption. He felt very strongly that the public deserved that. Even though he didn't live to see the results of his labor, the indictments and convictions, I feel this township owes him a debt of gratitude for all his efforts that should never be forgotten. I believe there is no one in this township more deserving of this honor than Michael Kays. He was a hard worker, honest, highly intelligent public servant, who served the residents with distinction and honesty. As I stated, Mr. Kays was a Vietnam War veteran and a two-time Purple Heart recipient. He also had a career in law enforcement with the Macomb County Sheriff's Department until his retirement in 1994. Mr. Kays's legacy is truly one of serving the public his entire life. I sincerely hope this board will reconsider the naming of the future Whitney Park to the Michael D. Kays Veterans Memorial Park. He is truly worthy of that honor and respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kays.
Good evening, board members. My name is Kathy Western. And right before the meeting, I distributed a two-page handout to each of you. Um, the front page is actually a picture of what the Macomb Township Recreation Center has set up as a display in their hall- their hallway to acknowledge and to honor some Macomb Township residents who won medals in the Michigan Senior Olympics Pickleball event this spring. Um, they won silver medals in the age 70 and up category. Um, and they had to practice, um, and compete in other townships because there are still no outdoor pickleball courts in Macomb Township. Um, the second page of the handout I distributed is the current, um, five-year recreation plan for Macomb Township. I believe we're in year four of this plan, and it might be time to get a status report on that plan. As you can see, years ago, um, pickleball was rated as one of the things that, uh, residents wanted, and very high on the list. And in fact, we had been told, speaking of the park at 24 Mile and Foss, which we have taken to calling the Eli Whitney Park, um, the pickleball courts would be there by now. This month, we were told that, um, in 2020, and it appears that, um, everything has stopped at 24 Mile and Foss, but there really hasn't been an announcement as to what, if anything, would go, uh, forward. Um, in addition, um, the town center was supposed to be getting more, the town center park was supposed to be getting more amenities, like a permanent music venue, places for kids' own, food trucks and parking. Um, the Wade Nursery property was to get a dog park, a historic village, and a crafts market. Um, now, I fear, having listened to our supervisor talk about chiseling the budget, that I know where some of these amenities went. But it would be helpful to have a status update and formal, uh, announcements from, from you folks about what we're to look, um, for going forward. Maybe it's time to take this five-year plan, truncate it, start over, and give us a one-year Parks and Rec plan so we know what, um, you intend. I did understand the supervisor to say that his priority now is the Pitchford Park and that we've contracted, again, with an engineering firm for the design services, but it seems like we've been throwing tens of thousands of dollars, um, on design services for all of these other places. And the firms mu- must love us, but, uh, I'm not sure they'll take us seriously if we ask again. So-
Ms. Western, I'm sorry, your three-minute time limit has expired.
I thank you for the alert. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ivanowski? Mr. Ivanowski, is there anyone who wished to participate remotely?
Yes, sir, there's two attendees. First one is Mr. Dan C., and then we have Mr. John Parkinson. Mr. Dan C., can you go ahead?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Daniel Clark. I am the audit principal from Raymond that proposed on the audit services for the township. First of all, I just want to say thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to be part of the audit process. It was a pleasure to meet the deputy treasurer, the finance director, and the purchasing specialist. I did have a question. I know after the original bids were received, there was a request afterwards to submit a lower bid if we were able to. I know our original bid stayed the same at 60,000, but I believe that the firm that you chose, Plant Moran, had an original bid of 80,000, and then it looks like they had dropped it to be a lot more competitive. So, just had a question surrounding why that process was done that way. And again, thank you for the opportunity. Have a good night.
Thank you. Typically, this isn't a question and answer period, but for your sake, if you direct your question to Janet Solomon in our office, who you should contact information you should have from the bid information, she can direct you as to how we conduct our bid process. Next person, Mr. Ivanowski?
Mr. Parkinson. Can you hear us, Mr. Parkinson?
I can, thank you. Thank you, board. First, I want to say how awesome it is to see everyone's face back in, in person. I am John Parkinson, resident of Macomb Township. I want to say thank you for all you trying to be fiscally responsible with our money, especially trustee Cusmano. Thank you, sir. You're doing us proud. I have the sentiments of Jim Jelius that that park should be renamed as such. My concern with the 24 Mile and Foss Park is that we spent probably a ton of money to clear that property. Now, I know that the residents on 24 and Foss didn't want that park there, and they had issues, and they probably don't mind it being grown over again. However, it is starting to grow over. I do a lot of work in the township and see a lot of things in the township. It's starting to grow over again, and we're going to have to pay to clear that land again. We put, we put a halt on that, Supervisor Viviano, you did, and to proceed with another park project. I, I think it's great that we're working on parks and we're trying to get parks in, but we need to complete something. You know, I know that the park at 21 and Romeo Plank is being worked on, that's the park we utilize the most because it's the closest to us. Also, I wanted to bring up the free lawn sprinkler programming. It's free, but it's really not. The residents are paying for that program, and, and I'm not sure who got the bid. I'd love to know who got the bid to program those. I didn't see any, any information in, in the paper or in the brochure. As far as the other thing, watering times, there is a sod farm in our, in our township that was watering today during peak times, or, and I was just, I was concerned about that, not sure what the process is, why, why they're able to water with tons and tons of water going onto the sod at, at that particular time, at this time. I would just like to thank you all for the time to speak, and I.
Thank you, Mr. Parkinson. Anyone else, Mr. Ivanowski?
That's it, sir.
Okay, if there's no more comments in, in the gallery, then we will move on to board comments. Trustee Oliver?
Madam Chair, pardon me, Mr. Chair, I have to get out of that old mode. I would just like to take an opportunity tonight to congratulate the three full-time elected officials on their vision and the value that they're offering our residents with the concentration on a balanced budget. It's amazing.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to thank you publicly for that.
Trustee Lucido?
First thing would be congratulations to Nate, our Eagle Scout tonight. That, I don't believe he's here anymore. That is a difficult accomplishment. I was a Boy Scout, I never made it that far. It was a lot of work, so congratulations to him. I do want to say thank you to Stacy and her team for the budget and the work of my fellow board members, the full times. I'll take my trustee hat off and put my resident hat on and say thank you on behalf of the residents for doing what you do and getting us a balanced budget and looking out for our tax dollars. And that'll do it.
Thank you, trustee Lucido. You should have worked a little harder, you would have amounted to something. Trustee Oliver?
Yes, again, thank everyone for the budget. Everyone worked so hard on it, and, and the fruits of it will continue. That's number one. Number two, Mr. Parkinson had just made a comment about the sod farmer. I suspect he's talking about me, I am a sod farmer, as I do for a living, and along with other things. But the water that I was using, just to make it clear, is pond water, it's not fresh drinking water. So, I, I'm not, I'm allowed to use it when I have it to use, and we keep our grass green so we can sell it to our customers, and that's how I make a living. All right, that's that. And one other thing. In lieu of all the terrorist, viral cyber terrorists that is going around, where do we land with protection in Macomb Township?
You want me to answer now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Between our IT manager, Mr. Ivanowski, and our, and our consulting firm, BPI, they keep all of our antivirus spamware up to date. They routinely are, are monitoring all of our IT infrastructure to make sure we are, have all the latest and greatest anti-hack, antivirus, anti-spyware, and anti-anything else that's available. Mr. Ivanowski, was that be accurate?
Well, we can also add that we also have a full backup. It's a disk to disk to disk, meaning one backup is created here at Town Hall, and then a copy of that backup is being sent to Station Two, because that will be geographically the, of this building, Two Town Hall, in case something happened to Town Hall, we will have a set of backups there.
Good. I, the reason why I asked that, in lieu of, you know, what's happened in the last month, it's, it's been an issue that makes me even think, as a resident, I'll, we'll be protected here, and as long as we're doing the best we can, that's all we can do. So, thank you both.
Yeah, the other thing I would note is that, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, if, the only systems that our residents would put like credit card information into would be BSNA, correct? Which is a system that's, it's off-site, it's not ours, it's, it's, but it's one we subscribe to. All of that information, BSNA, they experience, seriously, they encrypt everything, and it's very secure.
Yes, they host a server that has. Sorry.
They host a server that contain our public records, and also payments are processed through their website, so it's, nothing has been done, and no personal information is being taken through Macomb Township.
Thank you, Bob. Okay?
You answered me.
Good.
Thank you.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank Stacy from Finance for answering my questions. I can do my job because you do yours so well, and I thank you. Setting the budget is one of the most important functions of this board. It's not fancy or glamorous, and adopting the General Appropriations Act, you'll hear me repeatedly throughout the next fiscal year asking, is it within budget? And it's always a question, is, is this a budgeted position? So, this is the most important. It's, it's not political theater, it's not gotcha politics, it doesn't rely on scandals or personal attacks. It does implicate value systems on what's important and what's not. And the residents, and we've thanked everyone who works at the township, but I also like to thank the taxpayers for giving us the opportunity to serve, and I'm in agreement with the analysis of Mike Kays. I had, because of the distastefulness of public service, there was a tendency to township politics, I had withdrawn from public politics because I was afraid of getting soiled by the entire process of politics in the township. Mike Kays came to me, and he was not in very good shape, and indicated to me that there was corruption in the township, and he expected me to do something about it. And I did as a private citizen, and now I'm doing what I can. And I have no question about the integrity, I want to just state this publicly and make it clear, and it echoes what Treasurer Gillette had said earlier. We're all in the same direction. We may disagree on small things and small issues such as professional fees, and I understand everyone's positions, but it's important that we acknowledge the fact that those days of Dean Obuchi and the corruption of Clifford Freedus are in the past, and I want to assure the public that we are working as a team in a common goal and direction, and that any disagreements that we may have are minor by comparison to whether or not you can trust the integrity and character of the people you're working with. Other than that, I want to give a shout out to the people at Pinewood Villa for the cleanup that they did at their subdivision entrance, and I also want to remind residents that any vandalism or any criminal activity that takes place, even if someone spray paints a part of your property, you shouldn't keep it to yourself. Macomb County Sheriff's Office is designed to take reports, and so we can track down the offenders and prosecute them. That's what we pay our taxes for. And again, I'd like to thank the members of the public and the residents who elected me for the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Cusmano. Treasurer Gillette? No additional comments?
You used them all up?
Wonder why? Clerk Posey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've had several residents from Macomb Township reach out to our office wanting to know after this past election, they've had mixed emotions, and what they can do to get more involved, and what they can do to make a difference. So, for the first time in Michigan, the people will decide how their election maps are drawn. Michiganders voted in 2018 to take control of the mapping process. Now, residents can have their say about drawing election district boundaries that are fair and reasonable. On June 24th at 5:00 PM, the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission will be hosting a public hearing at the MRCC Banquet Center located in Warren, Michigan. This public hearing is to allow for officials, residents, and community representatives to provide insights and opinions on redrawing of district maps for the United States House and State House and Senate. Comments will be accepted in person at the meeting, as well as virtually by call-in and through an online public comment tool. You can visit the website at michigan.gov/micrc for more information, or contact my office. There'll be several representatives from Macomb Township at this hearing, just so that we can hear what everyone has to say and see how this will actually play out for us in the next election cycle. That's all I have.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. My comments, in case anyone is unaware, in a week from Friday, on June 18th, we're going to have our State of the Township address, which is at 8:00 AM at Sycamore Hills. You can contact the, the Macomb County Chamber if you wish to attend. We'll be discussing a number of things that have developed in the township since I have been here, and some of our plans for the near and distant future. Some of the things that our, people are most concerned about will be addressed then, but I will say, in regards to Whitney Park, I, I talked about it a few weeks back when we first got the wonderful news that we were going to be the recipients of the generous donation of what is now going to be Pitchford Park. But Whitney Park, at the moment, has been paused, and it will remain paused until the work on Pitchford Park is completed. The, I understand that we have invested some resources into developing a plan for that park. However, how that park was going to be paid for was not fully conceived. The, the millage that we were speaking of earlier is set to expire in 2022, and without a renewal, the bond that would be required to pay for that park would have no funding mechanism. We would be, have a huge liability on our hands that we wouldn't be able to climb out of anytime soon. In the meantime, we were gifted with this property, that we're now fortunate enough that we have enough resources in our township by selling some properties that we've begun to do, that we're going to continue to advance a park plan for the township and provide amenities to the residents, but we're going to do it with cash, and we're not going to go into debt. So, while that continues to move forward, and we are, I believe, just a month or so away from getting our official engineering plans, hopefully those come back on time, I can't say for sure when we're going to put a shovel in the ground, but be, you can be assured that the three of us full-time and the seven of us together, along with our, our department heads and our staff, have the development of that park as one of our top priorities, and we will advance it as quickly as it can be advanced. As to what's going to be in that park, if you attend or wish to view the State of the Township in about 10 days, I will be unveiling the rendering that we've been working from, and you'll be able to see the amenities that we planned for there, and I think everyone's going to be very pleased. And that's all I have. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair, at the time of 8:16 PM.
I, I believe the time is when I, when I declare it.
Well, after I make my motion, I'd like to make questions after if it's seconded then.
Can we debate that? We should probably.
This is motion seconded, Mr. Chair.
No.
I think we're just going to fail. Anybody else want to make a motion?
Second.
Oh. Well, I have a second. I'd like to speak to the motion.
Could you speak to the motion?
I would, yes. Mr. Chair, what time would this motion apply to if we adjourn this meeting?
Well, I think it's, I don't know. Can we, can we take, should we call a recess and discuss this and?
Is there a department head available that can answer this question?
No, I, I think we might just have to move forward tonight.
Well, I would move that with the record reflect. I'd like to amend my motion to adjourn the meeting so the record reflects my motion as to adjourn the meeting at 8:17 PM, and if the seconded motion accepts that, I'd like to, great.
Second.
Call a question? All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries, this meeting is adjourned.